Okay, we are live and.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, y'all rise please. We'll get the August 19 meeting opened with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to our guests. We'll start off the Harvey department as normal. Jason?
Morning.
Morning.
What's that?
Wow.
No cuts, no boars.
Thanks, Tori.
Do you hide them somewhere, Tori?
No, she has made the print bigger.
Bridge 87, 11th Road and 120 Yupus, nearly completion. Final paperwork is being completed. Bridge 11, Union Road, bridge work is completed. Walk through will be Wednesday. No updates on the other bridges. Bridge 108, a draft agreement was submitted to Endot. I was contacted by the district and is being reviewed by Central Office. Should have the contract this week to proceed. Milkman Dam, the exploratory work has been completed, being reviewed by DLZ for suggested recommendations. Letter of understanding submitted Endot. Need a signature on that. This is for a reimbursement for damages that was done on Redwood and 2B.
He'd see that. He'd see it.
And that was for $40,665.45.
Let you say again, Jason.
Forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents. I think that's what's highlighted on it, wasn't it? I think that's what was highlighted on it.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the reimbursement from Endot for the damage to 2B Road and Redwood Road in the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Second. Motion made second to accept the damage agreement from Endot for the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is that one or three signatures?
Three signatures.
The EV grant, the bid information was in Martel Electric. To install the charging stations was 12,336. And Bosak Motors for the Ford Lightning was 62,380. That information has been submitted in. Roadwork, chip and seal completed as of 8/16. That just gives us a list of the roads that we've done. Estimated total miles sealed to date for 2024, 60 miles of single seals and 30 miles of triple seals. And it's just been a very, another very productive year. I think that's all I got.
Anything else for Jason?
Nope.
Jason, I want to change. Mr. Raymer, did you want to come up? We talked the other day. Did you want to talk to the dress aboard about your concern, your fence?
Yeah.
Would you come on up, please?
Oh, man.
We're going to take care of this now while Jason's here. He'll be the one. It's his right of way.
Go sit down here?
Yes, please. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Harley Raymer. My address is 20639 Michigan Road, Arkansas, Indiana.
And this is a fence we talked about before that's out in the right of way. And Mr., was it Blanch? Is that who it was coming?
Dale Blanch. I wasn't here at that meeting.
Yeah, come in here and asked about it. And so, so you guys are up to speed. I sent you an email last week that Craig had surveyed it. And basically, when he surveyed it, it lined up with the neighbor's fence. So he is definitely out in the right of way. So you had some requests and.
So I guess when you look at this fence, you look south of this fence, everything is growing up in trees all the way out, parallel with this fence. So is the county entitled to let everything grow up in trees in front of our property? So for my, in my case, a milkman was complaining about not being able to see. There was sumac on the other side of the road growing up. The power line company tried to take care of that unsuccessfully. So we basically cleaned anything up. When I did that, my intent wasn't to put a fence there that far out, but with the culvert where it is, it was either way in and try to figure out how I'm going to take care of that, or then out there. So I guess, I guess I don't, I can see where, yeah, the lines align, but how come is it not taken care of? Is that just beside the point, or what's the deal there?
Obviously, you're talking about two different situations. The line is the line, but then the other's a separate situation.
So I need to move my fence in and see what happens, huh? Is that the way that works?
You guys in agreement with that?
Yep.
I don't think we have a choice, as I explained the other day.
Because utilities.
Well, utilities, and we have to be fair with everybody, it's the same line, but there's utilities running down through there, and that's the issue.
So if.
Is it staked? Did Greg stake it?
Yes.
So he can get his.
Yeah.
Back to the line.
He staked it, but I would go ahead and have, you know, call in the utilities, have
them utilities marked out. Make sure, you know, that's correct before you put your fence in and hit it with a post.
What if I just donate the fence to the county?
Well, I don't think we want it.
No.
We don't want that fence.
Yeah, I, I was told that the county, they, they, it was state property, and the county got pushed on a county. So then I was also told by you that the county, they just have to mow.
The contract we have is for so many feet back off the road right now.
We do that ourselves.
Yeah, okay.
So no obligation to take care of the rest of it, huh?
Jason, I'll let you respond to that.
I mean, basically, what we do on the right of ways for North Michigan, South Michigan, and those type of roads is mow the best we can out to the property lines. The actual area that you are talking about, yes, there is a culvert there. It is a pretty steep bank in order to get up and down those, and it would take more so to keep it maintained, handwork to do it.
There's a, right by this fence, there is a CenturyLink wire that they refuse to take care of. I know that for a fact. And that's the only thing by this fence. I guess, is there any way I can request a variance to have this fence there? I had four people come and tell me that, you know, the fence there is actually convenient for everybody involved. And, and yet, it seems like, yeah, it doesn't make, it doesn't really make sense, I guess. Because obviously, I was told, as Dale says, he can't get his tractor off the road. So I say, well, come out and look, guys. Can he get his tractor off the road anywhere else? He couldn't.
I would just say, unless you guys disagree with, I mean, the line is the line. We can't really change it for one and not change it for everybody. And, you know, everybody be out there and we'll have a mess.
I would say, change it for everybody, or then take care of it.
Well, we're not going to, I don't think we want to change it. So we'll need you to move that fence back within line where it's surveyed. Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Jason?
No.
Since Ty's got a.
I think before we move on, to reach out, we had that E and B paving contract that was brought to our attention. We tabled it. And I think we need to table, I think we need to make another motion to table that, paying that invoice until we get more facts. And that way, it's just not hanging out there. There's another motion. We tabled it the last time, and I think for the record, we need to table this again. So I will make a motion to table that E and B paving contract.
Second. Motion made second, table E and B paving contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Time's a public hearing, 9:50?
9:50.
Well, he's got comments before then.
Okay, Ty?
9:40.
Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Morning.
Morning, Ty. Hi, Leah.
Morning.
How are you guys doing today?
Good. How are you doing?
Every day's an adventure. Doing better every day, so, yeah. First thing we're off here for is talking a little bit more about the Brownfields Grant Coalition. We've got Leah Phil, May Cog, a letter. Introduce and kind of talk a little bit more about the memorandum and everything else.
Sure. Yeah, so we're bringing forward a revision to the existing Brownfields memorandum of agreement. That's for our regional Brownfields Coalition. It includes St. Joseph, Marshall, and Cosiasko County, as well as the Tolson Center for Community Excellence in the city of Elkhart. That's a change from the prior year. They're replacing Elkhart County because of the priority site in that neighborhood with that nonprofit organization. The purpose of this grant agreement, of this memorandum of agreement, is just to formalize Marshall County's participation in that coalition, so that all incorporated and unincorporated areas within the county have access to the grant funding. It's 1.5 million of EPA dollars for environmental assessments over the next four years. This is our third grant, and so it's, it's an update to the two prior memoranda that we had in place. I don't know if there are any questions or any details that you have on, on the matter.
Do you guys determine who, who determines who gets, who's awarded? Who determines who's awarded, I guess I'd say?
On a site-specific basis within the region. So we have a regional Brownfields Working Group, which is composed of local government staff. So Ty sits on that. We have the city attorney for Plymouth and other staff that evaluate all the sites that come in. We prioritize and rank them, and then make decisions based on equitable distribution of funds or needs within each county. One of the sites that we have helped with and that we will be helping with under this new grant would be 123 East, I believe, Washington Street, a couple blocks from here. So that could be redeveloped. The main purpose is redevelopment, and when there are, there's contamination, private sector doesn't want to touch it, this helps get over that barrier with environmental issues and, and get that back to productive use.
So if there's any additional sites that we should probably be aware of or send our way, we're always looking to get more of those sites on record on our end, so we can begin that process of going through the phase ones, phase twos. So if you know of any, or if there's any members of the public through our different resources here in the room, we'd love to know what those are, so we can continue to work with that and help those individuals reach their development potential.
Yeah, I would say Marshall County's had the fewest needs that have been brought forward, just smaller community, less urban, less industrial history, but we definitely want to support whatever we can.
And about, I'd say, six, seven years ago, Ralph did a Marshall County dedicated Brownfields grant. And so he did a lot of.
Yeah, he did.
Those specifically. And so we retain on as, as needed throughout Marshall County, depending on where those different needs are.
I think it's important, not only for us, but to support the other two counties in this endeavor too. So, and I think we've had a few Brownfields cleaned up through this grant process anyway in the past. So I would make that motion to move forward with this agreement with May Cog for the Brownfield grant.
Second. Motion made second to move forward with May Cog with the Brownfield Agreement Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You need to wait five more minutes, Ty?
No, no need to. So, before you today was going to be the Birch case for the rezoning, but unfortunately, that's needing to be kicked back to the Planning Commission. We had what we thought was a hearing done proper and advertised and everything along those lines. It turned out, post that, the letters that get mailed out for every one of those cases goes out to the neighbors, and those letters came back post that meeting. We had a stack of about 30 of them come back, which is very, very abnormal. And so, we had some difficulty getting things scheduled to come before you today. And I made sure to make sure that we met those deadlines, but under some advisement from our attorney, we're needing to get that kicked back to the Planning Commission so they can rehear it, just to make sure we're on the up and up. We met the letter of the law by getting everything sent out through the paper and through the mailers, but under discovering that the mailers got all kicked back, we want to make sure we're meeting the spirit of the law in relationship to the neighbors all having that notice as well. And so, we're wanting to get that kicked back. So I don't know if you want to do anything official, but my plan's to take it back in September. That way, it can be reheard there. Letters can all get resent out. That way, everybody has that equal opportunity.
Probably I have a motion to let them know that we, you think, or you guys okay? Jim, we need a motion that being kicked back?
You're worried about timing matters, is that?
From a timing standpoint, no. The letters that get kicked out, we had everything advertised properly in terms of the timing standpoint.
You don't need them, though, to react on your, for your timing purposes?
Timing, no. If they want to support us taking it back to the Planning Commission, that way there's a clear chain of direction, that would be fine.
I'd do that, I guess, that's fine.
I think that was what I was kind of getting at.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to send it back to Plan Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made second to send the, what is it, Public Hearing 24-PC-10 Birch back to the Plan Commission for review. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ty.
Before you leave, I was in attendance at the county council meeting last Thursday.
Okay.
With Mr. Hostetler, wasn't here, about the Plan Commission, about your advertising budget, and also your attorney fees. I know this board does not have any power over you or the Plan Commission, but I would hope that you, Mr. Burrows, as sitting on the Plan Commissioner, and Mr. Hostetler, to sit down and talk about the future of your Plan Commission meetings. I would suggest that maybe we just suspend them until you have some funding in place to pay for your advertising and your attorney fees. Because for one person to sit here and dictate who gets a hearing and who doesn't get a hearing is not what this county is about. So if you don't have funding, and as Mr. Levin explained it, that Mr. Hostetler, if you expend money without having money in your budget, it's a felon. So I would suggest that you, Mr. Burrows, and Mr. Hostetler sit down, because I don't want to see anybody get cited for a felon. And I know we can't make a motion here to do that, but it's just one of my suggestions that you guys look into that and just suspend until you get money. Because we cannot continue to operate in this fashion. That's all I had to say about that. Because, Jim, they're just an advisory to the commissioners, correct?
That's correct.
That's all I had to say about that.
Okay. Anything else? No, Ty? Okay, thank you, Ty.
All right. I'll coordinate with Mike and Dave to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Start going from there.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Marshall County, one, excuse me, One Marshall County, Gary Nighting?
You got John Greer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What is happening? Miss John Greer. That was maintenance, John. Sorry, Gary. You're more important than he is, so I just jumped the gun.
That's true.
No. John, we appreciate you.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I handed out to you guys the two proposals for the last rooftop unit that we're replacing on the jail. This will be the final one of the 10. And the low bid went to, low proposal went to H and G Services, so I would go with them.
And is this, I think earlier you said this was in the sheriff's budget for 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you, John, are these, I mean, you've looked, and these units are comparable? What were bid apples, apples?
Yes, they're, they're exactly the same. We were going to wait till next spring to bid them out, but they, they're going to change the freon, and we would be the guinea pig on the new freon. They've never installed one before. So I think we just should stay with the older unit. The new freon requires more electricity. We have to put new conduit in, new line, and I think it would just be better to go with the older freon. And then all the units have the same freon in the jail. So, but they're, they're exactly the same, and, and they will not bill us until next year, next January. So the units will be here before then, probably. The unit will be here before then, probably. But they've agreed not to bill us till next year, so the sheriff doesn't have to ask for an additional. It's just in his regular budget, so.
And that is 144,800 is the low bid, correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the bid from H and G for 144,800 for the rooftop unit over the jail.
Second. Motion made second to accept the bid from H and G for 144,800 for the rooftop unit over the jail. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'd just like to add that we did get our surge suppressor replaced out at the jail, so that's over with. We have a new one now. And the sidewalk is coming out right now. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we have a new sidewalk in the front.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
I apologize about that, too. I jumped over. John?
Gary Nighting from One Marshall County. Commissioners, thank you so much for letting me be here today. Want to just give you an update on the organization. It is the transitional group that has come from Marshall County Crossroads. So it's actually the same 501(c)(3) organization, just been rebranded, called One Marshall County. There was approximately 21 or 22 stellar projects that are in the wind down phase now. And so we're looking forward to the future. We're a convenor and a collaborator, and hopefully, a catalyst to different things throughout the county. And we're not a controlling organization. So we have very limited funds at this point in time, and I'm not here to ask for funds today. We have enough funding to go about another year with the current situation, with some grants and things that we've been able to acquire. So honestly, we are the organization that's hopefully going to help promote these different ready grants. There's a deadline coming up on August 30th for the submission of the Ready 2.0. As far as I know, there is no countywide projects that have been proposed. You may know differently, but as far as we know, there, there hasn't been any. Culver has one or two. One is a housing, and one is a commercial renovation of the State Exchange Bank. Then Plymouth has three. There's two housing projects, as well as a renovation of Heartland Artists. Bremen has a very substantial housing development that they're planning, along with some corridor changes. And it's, it's, between them and Plymouth, it's quite substantial what the housing plans are. So I'm excited about the things that have been done. I guess I'm here today to sort of thank you guys for your support of the past. I know that you've been very instrumental. I was at the groundbreaking for one of the Ready 1.0 projects that happened regarding the Marshall County Career Innovation Center. And I think that's going to be a great thing. And that was a county-supported, financially matched. So I appreciate you guys and your, your cohorts in the council to be able to support these kind of projects, and I believe going forward. I also understand that you've put some funding in the budget, I believe, for next year for doing a strategic plan. I think that's really exciting. If that made it into the budget, I didn't actually see the budget lines, but I know that it was being discussed. I think that's very important. And I will tell you that One Marshall County would be glad to assist you. You know, it's an all volunteer organization. There's no, no paid members. We have approximately 20 board members now that span not only all the civic governments represented. We also have industry, medical, education, and, you know, generally just as broad of a spectrum as we can to have representatives to help. Start to look at a vision of what can Marshall County really look like in the future. So we think that, you know, with our volunteer team, your efforts to go forward with a strategic plan, I think that that, we could definitely help along that way and give you any assistance that we can in our, at least where we're seeing things coming from the public. The only thing I guess I would ask today, if I have one ask, is we do have sort of a general underlying need for support for the ready projects that are going to be done by all these different municipalities. I don't know what the appropriate document looks like, so I really don't know what to ask for. But we basically just want the Marshall County government to be able to say, we support our communities, we support the projects that they're putting forth. And obviously, these are not for financial reasons, but more or less just a statement of policy. So I don't know if you'd like us to have something drawn up, sent to you, or if you guys would be able to do that. But I believe that some of the organizations, like, you know, like I said, there's six or seven projects that I'm aware of that would be presented, that they would appreciate, you know, some kind of a letter that would just say that. So that's what I have.
Jim, did you get a chance to review the, I know in the pilot news, there was a, a letter of support from Plymouth for the Ready grant opportunities. Did you review that letter or see that letter?
I did not.
Okay.
But I could find it, and if that's something you're wanting to do in a similar fashion, would be happy to prepare that.
Do you want to blanket for all of them? Basically, I'm assuming, correct?
Yeah.
I think the letter just for all the projects that.
Yeah.
He has talked about.
Yeah. You're looking, though, to list all of the projects in the county.
Yes.
Culver, Plymouth, and Bremen.
Yes.
We, we can, we can pull together what we're knowledgeable of and send you that list. We've been gathering that. Like I said, there's some that probably are submitting and not telling us, and that's fine. You know, we're, we're just trying to help everybody, so.
Yeah. If you could gather that list.
Absolutely.
And give it to Jim.
Send it to Jim.
And then Jim can prepare a letter on behalf of the commissioners.
Wonderful.
I'll make a motion that we support the projects. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, support the projects, uh, that have been presented by One Marshall County, um, for Bremen, Culver, Plymouth, um, and, and thank you very much for all of the efforts.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made in second to have Mr. Nighting get with Mr. Clevenger and for a show of support from the Marshall County Commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
You said something interesting. You know about these projects, but you had made mention that there's some projects that you don't know about?
I don't, I, if I knew what they were, I would tell you what they are. We're just, you know, you just get hearsay, right?
Okay.
You, you, there's nothing been formally. We have sent out to everybody that we know of and have any contact with, and we have brought it up at all of our meetings. We've had a, two or three board meetings now. And we've asked each one of the civic groups to hit their networks and please ask if anybody is doing a project that would like to have a letter of support to come back to us. Once again, you know, it sort of comes across like we're trying to funnel everything through us. That's not our intent. Our intent is to just be supportive of everybody that wants to do something. So, we have not received very many beyond, um, that I just described. I might have missed one, but that's basically what I know.
According.
I thought they were supposed to go through.
Indiana State would like us all to collaborate.
Right.
So, if, if Bremen and Plymouth have a housing project that is in Marshall County, they would like to see that together and, and put that in place. And so, that's why they are asking, what, that's why One Marshall County is asking to, for the coordination of all those.
Because I thought the process was, you're supposed to go to the Marshall County Ready to apply for Ready Grant money, but.
And, and there will be, there is a, a process. It's, it's listed on the, I believe it's on the South Bend Partnership site. It's a, it's the, uh, portal to be able to submit all the, um, plans. But you do not have to be coming through any organization. It can be an individual, for that matter. That's why we're not really aware of some of them that perhaps got submitted directly.
Okay.
I know Bremen's got multiple projects they're looking at, but I don't know what they're gonna submit. I know Plymouth, I think, is in the same boat.
Right.
I've heard. I can't speak to Culver, but they're really big in on the mixed use and collaboration.
Correct. Correct.
What they're pushing for. That gives you the best chance to.
Absolutely. I, I would agree with that. And we're trying to get as many dollars as we can to come into Marshall County out of that 48 million or 45 million that we can, so.
Culver's project, they want to take the old State Exchange Bank and renovate that into apartments on the second floor, but also create a new town council.
Correct.
Space. Because if you bend down to the Culver Town Council, I know Angie has, and it's pretty tight. And I see Jenny Monroe sitting back there, and there's not much room in there, is there, Jenny? So, that would be a good use of that bank building.
Yeah.
Plus, you have a kitchen downstairs, or they used to.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
Sure. Appreciate it. Dustin's Place, Vicki Brown. Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Vicki Brown. Dustin's Place address is 11802 Lincoln Highway, Plymouth, Indiana, 46563. I, first of all, I, I'm not sure if everyone knows Dustin's Place, so I'm gonna do a brief introduction of us, just in case you're not super familiar with who we are. I am Vicki Brown, co-founder and executive director of Dustin's Place. We are a children's grief center here in Plymouth, Indiana, um, providing grief support to kids ages four to 18, as well as adults, after the death of an individual in their life. Um, we do this at no cost, with no waitlist. Childhood bereavement is the most prevalent adverse childhood experience for our kids. And so, it is extremely important that we try to break down any barriers in order to prevent children not getting the support that they need at the time that they need it. I am here today because back in July, I went out to Colorado and met with Judy's House, which is the National Children's, um, Research Institute, the JAG Institute, to discuss, we know the families that we are getting at Dustin's Place. We, uh, served 423 individuals in 2023 in grief support at Dustin's Place. We know who's coming to us. What we don't know is who's not coming to us, and we wanted more specific, um, numbers in Marshall County. So, today, I'm not coming to ask for money. Um, I am coming to just kind of share these numbers with you because they were astounding to me. And what we were finding is, we know that one in every 10 children in our state will experience the death of a parent or a sibling before they turn 18. That's two kids in every single classroom grieving a parent or a sibling. The stats we don't have are caregivers, grandparents, classmates. Those are harder for us to regulate, but we do know that one in every 10 are grieving the death of a parent or a sibling. So, we wanted to break that down more precisely to Marshall County. So, what we did is, we worked with the JAG Institute over the last month, just came, we just got these results last week, to break that down even further by looking at the top three counties that we serve. At Dustin's Place, we had seven different counties represented in our building throughout last year. But our top families, our top numbers is Marshall County, St. Joe County, and Stark County. So, we wanted to know, why are these children coming to us? What are those causes of death? Um, and then what is that mortality rate that we're, we're comparing here? This is not comfortable. I know that death is not a comfortable subject for us to talk about, but one of the things that we have to do is we have to sit in it. Because the reality is, it's impacting our kids, and our kids are not getting the support that they need. We know through research that postvention is prevention. And so, by coming in and supporting these kids after these deaths, we know that we are preventing further deaths from occurring within our county. We also know that grief is not a pathological disease. Grief is not something that we need to be curing, but rather, we need to be supporting it. We know that we need to support these kids through their grief, so they can learn to live a healthy life after with the coping skills, with knowing that grief is not gonna go away, but they're gonna have it for a lifetime. I am both a widow and a parent of grieving children. My husband died when I was 34 years old, leaving me a 34-year-old widow and mom of three grieving children, a six-year-old, a five-year-old, and an 11-month-old. That personal experience drew my passion to figure out, what is children's grief and how do we support these kids? Because my kids had no support. It was a 10-month waiting list for them to get the therapy that they needed, and then come to find out, they didn't even need therapy. My son despised going to therapy. Um, he needed to know that he wasn't alone. We went through a children's grief support group in Elkhart, and, uh, his sentence that night was, Mom, there's another boy in there, and his dad died, too. What he needed to know is that he wasn't the only kid being raised by a mom, only. He needed to know he wasn't the only boy without a dad on the baseball field coaching him any longer. And so, that trajectory and that realization has driven my passion to understand, how do we support all the kids in Marshall County? Too many children are becoming left behind. All right? So, these numbers, when we look at, and I, I sent it over, so you may have it on the screen. They're gonna be hard to read.
Yeah.
You have it. Perfect. Um, if you go into the tab at the bottom, so the way they break this down is they look at, um, it's, it's from Wonder, um, the CDC results. They look at age groups, first of all, zero to 19, that would be our siblings. What is causing our siblings to die? And actually, it's pretty so, pretty much what we would expect from that. But approximately, what we came to know in this is approximately 6,300 kids in Marshall County are grieving the death of a parent or a sibling. 6,300 kids are being impacted by childhood bereavement, and yet, we're only the fourth children's grief center for the entire state of Indiana. Marshall County is very privileged to be able to say that we have a children's grief center here, because there's only three others in the whole state. There's one in Goshen, there's one in Fort Wayne, there's one in Indianapolis, and then there's us. There is no other children's grief centers for kids throughout Indiana. And so, we have families coming from Laporte, we have families coming from Kokomo, we have families coming from Michigan to Dustin's Place to get their grief support, because there's nowhere else for them to go. If we look at the second one, this is the one that I wanted to bring up. This is, uh, Marshall County, so you've got tabs along the bottom. It should say Marshall County's zero to 19, St. Joe County's zero to 19, because we also looked at those numbers. And then there should be a Marshall County 25 to 49-year-old. These are our parents. And so, this is the numbers that, when we pulled it out, that looks like maybe St. Joe. That's, those are lots of numbers. Possibly. It's super tiny. I can't read it. That one might be.
Stark.
Stark. Okay, so maybe even. That's St. Joe for sure. Marshall County didn't have the diversity, so we couldn't break it down into white versus. There we go. That might be it. Okay. So, what we know, sorry, I was super close to that microphone. Whoever's listening there, I was just talking loudly, leaning forward. Numbers look the same, right? We're looking at what we would expect. You see accidents, followed by cancer, um, and you would expect that. But, when we pulled this out further, what we found is that blue line, 33 accidental drug overdoses. When we take that out, because the way that you do, CDC does the, the coding, is accidental drug overdoses get blocked into accidents. And so, when you look at that top number that says accidents, that's a false number. We have to pull out those accidental drug overdoses. When we do that, accidental drug overdose is the leading cause of death for parents in Marshall County. One in every five deaths of a parent in Marshall County is due to a drug overdose. So, while grief is universal, while all of our children experience grief of some sort, the cause of death makes that grief experience much different. And so, we are leaving behind children who are not only grieving, but they're experiencing death due to an overdose. The trauma that they're experiencing, they say that one to every fifth, one fatal overdose is equivalent to every 15, um, non-fatal overdoses. So, these children that have experienced a fatal overdose have likely experienced non-fatal overdoses in their homes. We know now, when we break this out even further, that accidental drug overdose is the leading cause. Accidents are the second leading cause. And then when we go even further, cancer, and then suicide is our fourth leading cause of parent death in, in Marshall County. We have to be providing some resources for these children. And a lot of times, they are the voiceless victims. They get left behind. We throw resources at, um, so many other things, and then our children don't get the resources that, that they need. So, Dustin's Place, we are committed to providing this grief support, but we are committed even beyond that. We know that grief comes from all kinds of things. It's not just death. Grief comes from parents going, becoming incarcerated. Grief comes from, um, any kind of loss. I mean, the definition is of grief is an, is an emotional experience due to a loss. And so, it is our responsibility to provide that grief support in all kinds of capacities. For this reason, um, Dustin's Place has, has been gifted an opportunity to expand. We have been given a, a portion of the LifePlex, a very large portion, at a dollar, um, per year lease from the LifePlex complex, to give us 6,500 square feet, to renovate and to provide grief support at no cost to as many children as we can. At our grief camp, at the end of July, we had 57 kids present from all different areas of Indiana. And so, we know that if we can provide this grief support more than just every other Monday night, if we can do this on a regular basis, if we can do this after school, if we can do this on Saturdays, we can hopefully reach our mission, which is no child grieves alone. We can hopefully reach these 6,300 kids. So, today, I'm sharing these numbers with you to get your minds thinking about, how do we support these kids? How do we best provide these resources, back the resources that are currently here, and come together so that no child grieves alone in our county? Shortly, I did apply for a grant out of our United Way, um, the Lilly Endowment Grant. We applied in May, we reapplied again in July. We haven't heard yet. That's a match. That would be a 50% match. But our goal is to raise $800,000 so that we can bring this center to Marshall County and provide the grief support to our surrounding counties. That was a lot of information.
So, let me ask you. You follow, I, I, I'm assuming you follow, like, mental health grants and stuff like that? You, do you?
Correct. We are 501(c)(3).
You look into that kind of stuff?
We are currently looking into everything we can. Um, this building is a very new gift to us. We've been working with the LifePlex since, um, they gave it to us for the camp and realized, this is prime. This would be amazing. And then when they told us that we could have the entire upstairs, I'm horrible with directions, northeast, south, northwest, and upstairs, that's currently empty, um, which is 6,500 square feet, we immediately started looking. How does this work? Are we, can we take this on? Do we have the need, which we obviously do, 6,300 kids? We're not even touching that yet. And so, we will be looking all places for support. But I'll take any, if you know of specific ones, I would love specific ones.
Yes. I will tell you now, I was gonna bring it up later on in the meeting. This goes along with the out-of-state travel request. I've been in touch with Rudy Akam's office. Uh, I know last year, they, the federal, they had a bunch of grants, uh, available. Unfortunately, I didn't find out about it, it took about 30 days after they expired to apply. And so, the Health Department, different things. Uh, I'm told there's gonna be a round again this year. And I would like to see Marshall County, maybe the commissioners, take the lead and work with all these groups, bow out to, bow out at Community Corrections, these different places, to see if we could go after some of them grants, because I, I, again, everything's up in the air quite yet. They're expecting this to happen after, after January 1st next year. But I think, I was told we're in a prime, we're in a prime spot to apply, because it would be in a small rural county. And there's gonna be a, what I was told, I've been working with Griffin Nate, talking to Griffin about it, and, uh, Griffin's asked us to get in touch with Rudy's office and, because they'll coordinate and try to help us push it through. And, but I would like to see the county try to go after some of these mental health grants to provide services in this county, because we know it's, it's a problem.
Absolutely. And I would be fully.
Again, there's no promises.
Yeah.
So, this is all preliminary.
Well, we can absolutely provide the research to show what inaction of childhood bereavement causes, and how childhood bereavement is a mental health crisis right now amongst our kids, for sure. I also, the gentleman that was just talking, I wanna, I wrote down his information. I don't know what that one Marshall is, but we would love to connect with whatever that one is, too.
Any questions? Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your passion.
Yeah.
You can, you can hear it in your voice.
Thank you. Thank you.
Attorney's, attorney's report, Jim?
Uh, attorney report, um, under Old Business, where I took care of the highway. Kind of an update on Tamarack Solar. I think Rick Hall should be updating the commissioners concerning some revisions to the agreements Rick originally proposed to Tamarack and Venergy. I know he's in receipt of some proposed changes. So, we'll see where we are. I just added, just a note, so you know, the attorney that's representing some of the farmers, uh, and who have farm leases, is monitoring progress as well, so, um, that's, uh, just kind of an update on that. The auditor clerk lease agreement with Pitney Bowes is under Commissioner Items later on, so if you want, we can skip over that. That's, uh, really not much of an issue, I don't think. Kind of one out of the past. I don't know if you remember last fall, um, the sheriff and the merit board were, uh, drawn into a divorce situation that had occurred quite some time in the past. It had to do with the pension benefits. The, uh, the court, Spirit 3, made a decision, uh, that was appealed, and because the decision didn't, uh, grant our petition to remove the sheriff and the merit board from the divorce matter, we kind of monitored the appeal. Well, the Court of Appeals' ruling, uh, basically took care, it affirmed the, the trial court's decision. And although it didn't specifically rule or talk about our, our petition to be removed and lack thereof, the bottom line is, is that, uh, it kind of took care of matters, and there shouldn't be any impact now on the sheriff's department or the merit board. So.
Good.
That's just kind of an FYI going forward. And I think the sheriff's been advised of that. And then, finally, under New Business, I told Sandy that I would introduce the open burning ordinance their department has proposed. I think I sent all of you a copy of, uh, a draft that I received originally from her and tweaked only a, a little bit. I see she's out here. I note that you may want to have her explain why this ordinance is needed, because, uh, there's some, uh, provisions in there. It, it makes it clear, landowners aren't to burn garbage. It makes it clear landowners aren't to burn garbage, but also not to burn leaves. Clean wood products may be burned in accordance with some of the provisions of the ordinance. So I'm guessing that might trigger some controversy, and so I'm not sure how you guys want to handle that, but in any event, you may want to start out with.
I think you're gonna have to.
Great conversation with her.
Yeah, that, and probably a public hearing, but, and I understand her concerns, but as Commissioner Burrows pointed out, he lives in a subdivision where this county does not have a leaf pickup program. So what do, do they bag them? And I don't think the garbage companies likes taking leaves. So, and I understand, but I just, you know, we're getting awful close to fall, and to put restrictions on some of these subdivisions, and I know it's probably not right to burn leaves, but, and I know also that the Solid Waste is looking at a compost facility, but we're not there yet. But I would probably suggest that we're gonna have to have a public hearing. I don't know if we do that this year, or just wait till next year.
Well, and.
As we get in.
And who's gonna enforce it? I mean, you've got several, I mean, I'm, I'm one subdivision. There are several subdivisions within, you know, just a couple miles outside the city limits. So it's not only my subdivision, it's everyone's subdivision.
I wasn't thinking you out.
Yeah, you were.
I know.
So, but, you know, and, you know, there may be a way around it where, you know, from October to December, you allow leaf burning. But, you know, and Sandy's point is, my, her main thing is, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but in my conversation with her, is to disallow the fifty-gallon drum in the backyard that's burning, you know, plastic gallon jugs and those types of things. So I think, yeah, I think there needs to be a public hearing, it needs to be advertised and specified, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it, and if there's a grace period for leaves, which I would strongly advocate for.
I guess I would point out, I understand why we want to stop trash burning, but what happens if somebody has a barrel full of trash, can't burn it, they don't want to take it to pay to have a garbage service pick it up? What's to stop them going out dumping on the back gravel road?
Well, and that's.
And that's another issue, that's another issue.
Exactly.
We have to be aware of, because it will happen.
Yep.
So, we may have the best of intentions, but are we creating another? I just, I'm just saying it's a discussion, we have a public hearing, needs to be talked about.
Yep, I agree.
So.
I think it sounds like one of those things that should be taken up after the first of the year.
I support that decision. Okay. We will take it up after first of the year.
Jim, you got anything else?
That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question for Jim.
Go ahead.
Again, I was at the council meeting last Thursday, and it was mentioned that Jim Masterson would get ahold of you and Mr. Lebon and sit down and see if we can't compromise. Has Mr. Masterson reached out to you yet?
He has not that I know of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
I did.
Yep.
Auditor's report.
I have your August fifth meeting, August fifth minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the August fifth meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
I have the August fourteenth executive session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made second to approve the executive session minutes of August fourteenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Accounts payable claims.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the accounts payable claims. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Payroll claims, sorry.
Motion to approve payroll.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the payroll claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we have public comments, anyone here wishing to?
Can I go back for a second?
Yeah.
Earlier, earlier this, what?
Go ahead, I forgot something, go ahead.
Oh, earlier this summer, you were instructed to send Mr. Lebon's checks to Duwajak, Michigan?
He has submitted a W nine, they are going to South Bend.
Oh, they're going back to South Bend now, but they were going to Michigan?
The invoice is coming from Duwajak.
Okay.
Michigan, but the W nine that was submitted is going to South Bend.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, before we public, I forgot one thing. We have the truck coming from the Health Department. I wish, we just talked to Angie a little bit ago to do a prepay, and I don't remember the amount.
Forty thousand, seven hundred and some dollars, I apologize, I don't.
It has been approved, it's just a matter of doing a prepay so they can get the truck and not wait for.
And that's through Auto Park?
That's through Auto Park, correct.
Truck itself was approved, the purchase to move forward was approved in April.
Yeah.
And the truck is now available.
And I think we did a prepay back then, but I'm not sure, we're just doing, be on the safe side.
That's fine. Motion to approve the prepay to Auto Park for the truck, for the Marshall County Health Department.
Second.
Motion made second to do the prepay on the truck for the Marshall County Health Department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we have a public comment. Please keep in mind, anyone who's raised their hand, keep in mind, three minutes. Mike, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mike Delp, thirty-seven, forty-six, West Shore Drive, Greenman, Indiana. Got something mean I want to talk to you about, but I'm gonna first of all say Sandy helped me out by, there was a burning going on, on Fourth Road, right along the edge of the road, and burning all their trash, and it would just leave a mess there, and Sandy took care of that, and I want to pat her on the back for that. And my wife supported Vicki Brown for Dustin's Place, and if she ever asks for any money or anything like that, I would support that. So, that's not the reason I'm here, though. I saw what happened the last commissioner meeting with the three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars change order, and I'm trying to understand how that can happen without prior approval, so.
First of all, it wasn't a change order.
Okay, I'm sorry, it wasn't a change order, you're right, yeah, you're right. I forgot, there's a bridge there, but I was thinking, you're right, it wasn't a change order, I understand that. So.
I knew you did.
I'm trying to understand how that could happen, so, any explanation, Mr. Clods?
I would say you have to talk to Mr. Clevenger, because at this point in time, we cannot talk about it.
Say it again?
I'd ask you to contact Mr. Clevenger. At this point in time, we cannot talk about it. Any formal statements will be made through our attorney.
I'm trying to understand why this work was done, and in the last commissioner's meeting, and maybe Jason just misspoke, but said that we wanted to do one continuous poll. Well, I've driven out there twice in the last few days, and there's a butt joint where it was paved off of the bridge, and then there's a joint, and then this new paving happened. So what Jason was saying was the reason to push forward and do it without authorization, to me, doesn't make sense, because there is a butt joint on the north side of the bridge and the south side of the bridge. So, I got pictures of it, it's very obvious if you haven't been out there. So, I'm totally confused by that one. The next thing is, trying to understand, I talked to some of the residents right by the bridge, I'm trying to understand why our county employees were out there on a Sunday, removing some dirt to a pole building, why that couldn't be scheduled during regular hours. But what the rush was to send people out there on overtime doesn't make sense to me, along with the three hundred ninety-five thousand. Is Jason still here?
Yeah.
Jason, is the road gonna be burned?
Yes.
Okay. It's not burned right now, there's a fall-off significantly there, and it needs to happen before fall, because if you get off the edge of the road, it'll suck you right over in some of those deep spots out into it.
Can you wrap it up, Mike?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up here shortly. The other thing is, a pipe was replaced out there in a real low area. The steel pipes that were removed are laying along the side of the road. Eight ten-inch pipes. Again, it's a hazard along the edge of the road, so we need to be getting that taken care of. So, just don't know how, in business or anything else, somebody could approve something, and I don't think we're being told all of the truth, Mr. Clods, I'll be honest. So, I think you've got some sort of finger in this, and I don't understand why you thought that was appropriate to do that, but that's. And my last question is, Jason, will anything be done to Fourth Road this year?
We are planning to chip seal.
You're planning to chip seal? Are you gonna level off where the dirt, where the edge of the road falls off significantly before you chip seal it?
We're planning to wedge in.
Okay. I knew it was on your plan when I was here earlier in the year in February, and if not this year, I sure hope next year, but I hope we don't go out there and just chip and seal it, and not take care of where those ruts, those fall-offs are on this edge of the road there in multiple spots, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else at all? Okay, seeing them, we'll move on to Commissioner Items. First item is Pitney Bowes postage machines.
The machines themselves will be similar to what we currently have, prices similar to what we currently have. This is pushed from the post office. Due to changes, we are required to get new machines, so I'm just asking for approval of the agreement.
Jim, you looked at this and you approved it, correct, if I remember right?
Yeah, I looked at just the, kind of the purchase order. The terms and conditions are on a link, and a link is multiple, multiple pages. I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary to go back and look at that. I mean, I haven't had any experience or any problems with Pitney Bowes, given the proposed thing and the contract being about the same. I mean, I, I just, and with the dollar value, so yes, I don't, I don't have any issues with going forward. In fact, actually, the lease is a little less, if I recall.
Yeah, slightly less.
I make a motion to approve the Pitney Bowes postage machine agreement.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor, say aye. Spitney Bowes, I'm sorry. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the MCEDC appointment.
I was contacted by Greg Helderbrand and LeRuther Schmidt, who was the commissioner's appointment. She has resigned from the MCEDC board. Originally, she was put on there because she was administrator at St. Joe Regional Medical Center. Greg indicated to me that Eric Holzopple, who is the current administrator at the hospital, has agreed to finish out her term, whenever that is. So I would make that motion to appoint Eric Holzopple to the Marshall County Economic Development Board.
Second.
Motion made second, appoint Eric Holzopple to the Marshall County Economic Development Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We took care of the Ridgeway events, Sheriff's Department. I don't know, Sheriff, if you got anything you want to add? I, I sent the message out to everybody on this trailer. My understanding, they want to do a Blueberry Festival, has contacted Sheriff, want to do a joint, buying a trailer. But we need, we need an agreement with them, an MOU, and they want to split it fifty-fifty. It'll be set up for a command center, and then the sheriff would be allowed to use it for other events in the county as needed. And I think it was, what, ten-four? The trailer was about ten-three, ten-four cost? Yeah, and that would be split fifty-fifty, and he says he has money to pay for it out of his commissary funds.
Matt, in the, in the past, the state police used to bring in a trailer to act as a command center, way back when I was president of the Blueberry. Do they still do that, or would this take the place of that?
I'll be honest with you, I've been in law enforcement for forty-three years, and I've never been in a scene where there was a state police trailer that was command center.
Okay.
I know Elkhart County has one, I know St. Joe.
Yeah.
St. Joe County does.
Maybe it was somebody else's trailer.
And, and we've been in need of a trailer now for a couple of years after we lost the trailer that was a three-way split between us, Community Corrections, and the Drug Free Committee. Every April and every October, we're hauling eight hundred pounds of unused and expired medication to the DEA office in Maryville. And, I mean, other than take two or three pickup trucks, you know, a trailer works best. So thank goodness, Captain Snyder's dad has a trailer, and we've been borrowing that to handle that detail. And also, I see a need in the future. A lot of these events are asking for our officers and our reserve officers to come work at part-time. And, you know, we could utilize the trailer for that example, Four-H Fair, Culver Fest, Bourbon Fest, you know, if they needed it, it would be available. But it will be set up as a actual command center, the, the equipment included in that price, the electricity to power it, tables, air conditioning, expanded roof so you can stand up in it, stuff like that.
And do we have a cost?
It's a little over ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make it look a bit more, never split it fifty-fifty. Do you have, do you know who, who's your contact point at the Blueberry? Because Jim's gonna have to get with them if we're gonna do an MOU.
I'll have to get that for you, because actually Ryan Hollipeter, who was the go-between with me and the Blueberry, in fact, that's who the proposal came from, and he will have the contact person, I'll have him get a, email, email you or get ahold of you who our contact was. And they, they said they would want the trailer put, titled, and put on the county. They, they agreed to that.
So, insurance through Mike.
Have we checked?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't checked with Mike, but that's where it go-to gets, and yeah, it would be on our policy.
Yep.
I think that's the reason of the MOU, to make sure we've got it insured, and also make sure.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're not taking responsibility for something that Blueberry does.
Yeah, definitely wanted insured, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You gonna say something, Kevin?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say something. Do I have a motion?
So. Wait until we, I'm in favor of this, but.
Wait until we have the MOU.
Get the MOU in place, then I think we should vote on it at that time, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Is that gonna hold up the purchase?
Do what?
Will that hold up the purchase if we wait until the MOUs get ready?
That, that's up to you guys. I mean, we're getting closer to the Blueberry Fest.
I know.
So, if we could go ahead and move forward with the purchase, and then we can make that MO, they sound like they're willing to do whatever it takes with us.
Yeah, because that's only, what, two weeks away?
Exactly.
I would go ahead and make a motion, and in that motion, to support purchasing the trailer fifty-fifty between the Blueberry Festival and the Sheriff's Department, to be paid on the commissary fund, with the understanding that we'll have an MOU in place in a reasonable amount of time. Because I want to buy something, and then we don't have a MOU. So, that's my motion.
Motion made second to approve the purchase of the agreement, uh, purchase of the trailer between the Blueberry and the Sheriff's Department pending an agreement with an MOU?
Yeah.
Is that satisfactory?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Matt, before you leave, we have the WEX Fleet Services.
Okay.
Can we skip over your, the out-of-state travel and talk about the WEX.
Yes, 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 go ahead.
And Sheriff, I'll let you, I, I will just say, I reached out to the Auditors Association, and the majority of the counties are using WEX Fleet Services for their fuel, for their Sheriff's Departments.
Right now, we use a fleet through Seven-Eleven and Speedway gas stations. It's been in place since before I was sheriff, and every car is assigned a credit card to be used for gas. We are basically charged extra if there's not a Speedway or a Seven-Eleven that we can use that card at. We lose the discount because it's a Speedway, Seven-Eleven operation. But Angie and I started to run into problems with, their billing cycle ends the seventh of the month, their office is not getting the, the. Their office is not getting the invoice until like the 16th or the 17th of the month, and then they put a 27th of the month as the date it's due, and if we don't have it to them by that date, they turn around and charge us $106 late fee.
Holy cow.
So working with Angie, we set it up to where I could get email notification that the invoice is available, sign onto a portal, and grab the invoice off the portal, and we can play, pay off that invoice. Well, they stopped sending out the email, and even with the portal, it's not showing up on the portal now till like the 15th of the month. And I had a long conversation with the, with the company last week, and really went through two persons explaining it clearly. Anybody could see it, where they were charging us a third late fee when we were only late twice, and eventually, they did send me an email and said, "We'll credit your account next month, because you're right, we made a mistake." But I just not getting much cooperation, plus the fact that, you know, we use, if we don't use this at a Speedway or a 7-Eleven, we lose the discount. So Angie, I told Angie about it. She reached out and found out that this, this WEX fleet services, most of the counties in Indiana use, and you get a discount on any station you use, and it's, you said, like 95% of the-
Accepted, 95%.
-gas stations accept it. And that's a gas card, so it can't be used for, for other things. And I, I would like us to pursue an agreement with that company.
Because there's not that many Speedways out there.
Not once you get out of this area.
No, they're hard to find if you can find one, so I would make a motion that we go forward with the WEX fleet services gas cards for the Sheriff's Department.
Second. Motion made second to approve the sheriff moving forward the WEX fleet services card proposal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item is the out-of-state travel request, and that's basically me. You all know there's an insurance conference coming up. Ryan Colvin's told us about. I would like to kill two birds with one stone. I'd like to attend that conference in DC. It's in the September, the, I think it's, well, it depends on today. I got airfare, it'll be 10th to 13th, coming back on Friday, and either flying out Tuesday morning, or Tuesday afternoon, or Wednesday, early Wednesday morning. And then also, Griffin suggested, seeing as how we have an interest in the grant funding next year that they think's coming around, to stop out there in their offices a few blocks away and, and meet the people that will be helping us write these grants. His office will, Rudy's office will help us write the grants and push for them and lobby for us to try to get something. So again, everything's up in the air. I can't make any promises, but it happened last year, so I'm not sure the proper procedure on out-of-state travel. I didn't know if the commissioners had to do it. I know other department heads do, so I figured I better bring it here and just make sure someone covered.
What are we paying for? Are we paying for your flight and your hotel?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the, yeah, it'd be a flight and a hotel, basically, the, the award.
And how much?
About 15.
1,500?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that much money in our line item?
Yeah, we do now.
There is an additional appropriation that will be advertised for the September council meeting.
I contacted the council before we did this to make sure they didn't have a problem with it, because I knew we was gonna need an additional. Nope.
Nope? Okay.
Nope. I was waiting for this, to make sure. I can say, I'm not sure of the policy. I know other people have to, but out-of-state travel, I figure if you're going on behalf of the county, you almost have to, best to have approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the out-of-state travel request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have anything else, Mike?
No.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, just a couple of things.
Okay.
Again, last Thursday, one of the council members held up Derek Jones's contract with the plant commission and read one line out of this whole contract, and the contract is one, two, three, almost four pages. So I don't know how you can try to pick one line out of a contract and not read all of the contract. And this contract was, when you were plant commission president, you signed that contract also along with-
Back in '19. I understand it's just rolled over.
And what are we doing about the parking lot across the street? We, we held off the city of Plymouth because we were doing renovations on the courthouse. They kind of let us slide. Courthouse is done, and we are out of compliance, and I see Mark Goodley sitting out there. We are, and usually, he says something to me once in a while when I see him, but, hey, you haven't had that parking lot paved yet. You're out of compliance with Plymouth zoning ordinance, so what's our plan to do with that?
You want to move forward? I believe we'd have to come up with money somewhere or go for an additional. Do you want to move forward and have it?
Well, after-
Have a bid?
Last Friday's meeting, there was a proposal that was put in by Millstone that you signed for-
Signed at my accident.
$49,500, so-
In their signatures.
So you signed the contract.
I got it back.
How'd you get it back?
Jason hadn't turned it over yet. I went and got it. I called him right away once Angie told me that it was in there.
So you signed something without, or approval, or knowing what you were signing?
I didn't realize I signed it, yes. Mm-hmm. I was going to bring it up to the meeting with everything else that happened. I forgot about it.
Well, we're gonna have to get it paved somehow, some way.
We need proposals.
You want to put it out for bid?
Yep.
Have Jason put it out for bid?
ASAP, because it's coming to the end of the paving season.
Yeah.
You could, given the size of that project, you actually could just request proposals from three paving companies. You don't have to necessarily bid it, bid it.
Seal bid.
Just ask proposals to be in by a certain date and then review them.
Well, we know there's, was it drainage issues or something earlier they were looking at?
Well, and that's, I mean, if you make the request for proposals, you're gonna need to have some specs to go along with it, you know? You're gonna need to say, well, we needed, you know, drainage issues and-
Well, I think they were talking about putting some catch basins.
I mean, the city regulations for parking lots and-
See, Mark, we're working on it.
I need to go. It's okay. I know you are.
Well, I think we need to get at least two proposals. If we can get three, that would be great, too, but-
Do you want to keep it through maintenance or go through the highway? What do you want to do?
What do you want to do?
Well, it's basically its maintenance lot, but I don't know if he's got the contacts